Thank you for your questions. For the meeting, for 2022, the time is now 7:03. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Title 231, for the law of 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the summer night of 2021 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News and Star Ledger. A copy was noticed as well posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board. That copy is on file in the municipal press office. Commissioner Kelly.
President.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracco's absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present mayors except for Commissioner Petracco who is absent excuse.
This is my turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Regular meeting minutes for May 17, 2022, and June 7, 2022. I need a motion.
What? Sir.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Executive session minutes for May 17, 2022, June 7, 2022, June 21st, Sessions 1 and 2.
What? Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
We have done communications, proclamations, reports. So we're going to go a little out of order on our agenda and turn over to Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very auspicious meeting. You are not only honoring one of our teams, but more than anybody has ever expected. This is inspiring. We honor two teams. First is our Nutley High School varsity softball team. And this is a team that believe in themselves as individuals. They believe in the whole concept of team. They believe in the managers, in the coaches. They work harder probably than any other team in the history of Nutley High School girls softball. And they excel at it. So I am very proud of this resolution. Whereas the Nutley High School varsity softball team has enjoyed an outstanding season with a mark of 21 wins and six losses. And whereas the Raiders finish the season as the NJSIAA North Two Group Three State Sexual Champions. And whereas the Raiders have also finished second in Nessus County, fourth in Group Three, at the top of the law, ranked 17th in the entire state of New Jersey. Whereas the members of the Nutley High School varsity softball team are Luca Blacato, Ricky Cecchetti, Leah Gomano, Cindy Cass, Fallon Scorpio, Leah Peiano, Giuliana Fazio, Gianna Remo, Robin Milo, Sasha Wanko, Sienna Cantor, Gabriela Mariano, Sky Scorpio, Megan Speedy and Lola Thompson. And whereas head coach, Exeter Head Coach, Lou Anzulo, and assistant coaches, Ikey Peano, Gabriela Carden, Michelle Cuzio, Stephanie Ruvo and Brianna Gomano, were tirelessly trained by these athletes. And whereas the members of the 2022 Nutley High School varsity softball team are the NJSIAA North Two Group Three State Sexual Champions. Now, therefore, your resolve and the board of commissioners who protect the Nutley County Vestas of the state of New Jersey, join with citizens of Nutley, to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the 2022 Nutley High School varsity softball team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishment. I proudly approve this resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Before I move, I don't think it's going to be any great mystery what any of the votes are going to be on this resolution, but I just want to extend my congratulations to those who are seniors and graduating. Use this success as a launching point for the next phase of your life. For those who are coming back next year, I want to use this as an opportunity, and I do this with every group that comes here with a championship win. Challenge yourselves to come back next year and win another championship. The hard work begins now, and there's going to be people looking at you, targeting you back. So I challenge you to come back here next year, and I look forward to seeing you all back here next year. So congratulations, aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Before I move, I'll echo Commissioner Kelly's comments. I won't go back to my days in sports because that was pre-internet, pre-laptop.
Pre-sort.
Pre-sort. I wanted to tell you what it's like to be on a laptop. But what I will say is this, to achieve the excellence that you have achieved, there are values that come with them. And I frequently talk to people about these values. One is integrity, is teaming, is being honest with one another. Being a team, recognizing that we need to have dependencies on one another to lead successfully. Respect, respecting one another when you have a good day, 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 or everything's in common, to be there for one another. And then the other is accountability, showing up every day and doing what it takes to do as well. We all have an example by that, and I encourage that if you take that into your future lives, remember that if you pay attention to the award, to the championship.
Commissioner Tucci.
Girls, I think I've said a lot already, but I just want to leave you with this. You have accomplished things, nothing short of enough. I am so proud of each and every one of you. I'm sure you should savor this moment and think about this as you continue in your career. I'm very proud of you.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Ladies, congratulations on a wonderful season. You may not be proud. I say this when you go through a season like this, you know, you've been together, you've used together, laughed together, surprised together. Girl, let's do it. Twenty years from now, she's still going to be your best friend. So, girls, congratulations on a great season, coaches awesome, great job. Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Oh my God.
Oh, congratulations.
Hello.
Guys are great. Come on down.
Y'all look.
My friends on the way up.
You guys, please.
You guys, you gotta like kind of, you walk in, you go up top. And go up top. And they go behind the desk, y'all. Go behind the desk. Yeah. Everybody behind the desk. Little ones. Go up there too. It's not for the world. You're a job leader. Good job ladies. John, you're very nimble. Show production. Show them the other way. All right. Try my best. Go. All right, thank you ladies. Yes, something.
Thank you.
On here. Just grab it.
Thanks, resolution. I'm immediately proud to present this meeting. And I believe the last time that a seventh and eighth grade girls softball team won the suburban state championship, many of the ladies on this varsity softball team, which were in the suit, were on that championship team. So ladies, seventh and eighth graders, this is what you have to look forward to, all right? And we're going to hope you do, we want to remind you to try your best always, do your best, and we'll be back here, a lot of you again. Whereas the girls seventh and eighth grade softball team has enjoyed an outstanding season, posting an overall record of 10 wins, one loss and one tie, while marching our way to the suburban championship. And whereas the members of the girls eighth grade softball team are candidates for the Jane, Natalie Kidd, Ryan Clinton, Sofia Roga, Zoe Monroy, Leah Gafabio, Katherine Melanar, Olivia Miller, Giuliana Larento, Katherine Mocchio, Isabel Vaidas and Samantha Grella. And whereas head coach Kim Jane, along with assistant coaches, Wanda Javeria and Lynn Millenore, were tirelessly training by these athletes. And whereas the members of the girls seventh and eighth grade softball team are the suburban softball division and lead champion with a record of 10, 1 and 1. Now, therefore, your resolve and the board of commissioners of the town of Nutley County Vestas, join with the citizens of Nutley, to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the girls seventh and eighth grade softball team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. Girls, we are so proud of you. Congratulations, and I proudly approve this resolution.
Thank you.
Again, I don't think the vote's going to be any surprise, but I'd like to extend my congratulations. And like Commissioner Tucci said, few eighth graders, there might be a couple spots that will be a very successful varsity team next year, so hopefully we'll have them back here sooner rather than later, to see you back here next year. Few seventh graders, like I said before, the hard work begins now, I want to see you guys back here next year as well. And so you have a target on your back, so you got to put in the hard work and start practicing. And I hope to see you guys back here next year. I do want to congratulate again the varsity team for staying for this period. Thank you guys, just going to get your award and go on off into the sunset. You stood it four years, three years, periods, and so that shows a lot of character for you guys as well. So aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Again, I'll echo Commissioner Kelly's comments as well. And I read that my comments recorded integrity of the children's development. People required to be, of course, able to see you back here, win another championship. All of you, as commissioners, more responsible than your manager to making sure that we do our best, again, to give opportunities for you, to ensure that we're able to save. Very fortunate.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Yes. Ladies, once again, you're outstanding, you're excellent in each and every game you play. And you know what? I deeply miss, if I didn't thank all the parents and family members, also for our varsity ladies, being the father of two boys and two girls, and I know Frank Gomano is here, and the other commissioner's here, have followed their children throughout their career, starting junior raiders, right through middle school, okay, and entering into high school. It takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of dedication. So parents and family members, thank you so much for supporting them, these girls, and having them achieve the outstanding accomplishments that they have. I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
10, 1 and 1, that's a great record, girls. Keep up the good work. Hopefully you're back here in four years, you're more honored to be a state sexual champion. Congratulations to you, your coaches and your parents. I vote aye. All right, ladies, come on, let's take a photo. This team is more like.
Oh, wait, don't give it.
Somebody's going to, somebody's going to stand while we're going to back. Kim, bring someone in the back so we can.
That's the Taylor's house, Mr. Tucci.
All right. All right, I got to turn side. You go down first, he's more important than me. It's all my crap, man. Go that way first, look at John first. Good. Perfect, thanks, guys. Not very nimble. Thanks, girls. All right, congratulations. Have a, have a deep executive section for contract negotiations and litigation?
Uh, yes, my litigation and negotiations.
Litigation. Have a motion.
Yeah.
Aye.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Title 231, for 1975, the primary system of the meeting, where as the public bodies of the meeting had such circumstances as it exists, and whereas the board of commissioners of the township of Nutley County Vestas stated that during its hours, the session, now their co-earthers of the board of commissioners of the township of Nutley, also second concession to discuss litigation and negotiations, made for the result of the time such discussions may be difficult, most of the public shall be required, such disclosures may be heavily affected, and townsfolk pending annual anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters and other matters, but in exception provided by statute, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The time is 7:22.
Mr. President, please read the motion for motion. I'm writing about Perkins.
Yes, Mayor, would I have to refer?
Apologize to the public. We had some discussion on some of the agenda items. Just to change something, I think. Another question for Billis.
Thank you, Mayor. Billis, for July 2022, we will look at various payment $9,646.00. Revenue finance, free living $135,340.75. Home safety, $8,692.87. Home works, $20,750.26. Park sample property, $955,118.02. Wearing utility, $111,766.25. A roll as of Friday, June 24, 2022. Regular payroll total, $1,022,954.31. Overtime payroll total, $50,930.35. Total payroll, $1,073,027.66. Print total of $5,490,661.79.
What was it? Sorry.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scruffelli.
Hi.
And that's it for Billis, Mayor.
All the time members of the agenda items, all members of our board.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide the mayman's address for records. Further time is granted by the Board. Each person should limit their address to three minutes. Overruns to the Board of its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor, when he persists, comes to appropriate time.
Will we move on to another? We're going to move on to the second agenda. Number, there's only two questions this evening. First, we need to hear us. Number 19322, is a change order, GMR, to the meeting room. What is that change order for, Marv? You want to get that?
The last meeting was in the world.
Which one's number? It should be, wait, 233. Number 193-22.
Just one resolution.
I'm with Billis.
I think we talked about Billis, I'm sorry, just going through. You want to ask how Billis?
I didn't mean to leave the room. They're checking behind us. I don't have one. No, well, I like to find out.
So, yeah, the change order that the, uh, Bill went over, what we approved to give him.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
What we, what we approved, whose contract that he's getting with, his billings got over that. Right now, less than $1,000. That's why this is changing.
I'd like to make a copy of that, okay? I'll open it, that's for sure. The other, I see on it three, with Commissioner Tucci, there's three items that he furnishes. Also computers, $200,000, $4,000, $5,000, $4,000, $13,000. I wonder how it happened. Oh, good, why?
Sure. For $300,000, this for, uh, four servers, and roaming entire town. And this is critical infrastructure that we use efficiently and has on my suspicion. So, here you see, this equipment wasn't on top of our system.
These are the computers that I believe is identity, so father had some processing to work out some sort of security. Or assume. I think it was a people's having a lot of, and then I asked, I think, last, and he said he had no plans to go with this.
I think we referred to the original resolution, or is this the same thing?
This is, is it? I don't know if it's your business.
You think we talked before about the, the original resolution for this? This is the actual purchase.
And this is the actual purchase. It is the actual purchase. I don't really mind that.
Anybody else who might interest in connections on the agenda item? So you know, let's move on to work. Commissioner now specifically Travis. Commissioner Fish.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to commend you to outstanding Fourth of July presentation. I believe if not far, if you want to far, I have a ten minute mark.
Just follow your lead from October. I think you've been there right. But since just to follow up on that, just like I get all the missions there at the department. This collaborative effort, put something that attitude on. Especially the amount of people, I estimate four, six thousand people were surrounding the overall and other streets in our center watching the display. So thank you to all of you in your departments. Please pass that on.
Again, I just want to echo Commissioner Tucci's sentiments. Great job, Mayor. We had another coach who was complaining where this month will have some information on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. From our last meeting, I'm looking to table ordinance 3495. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And ordinance number 3497, we will also report to the agenda. Commissioner Tucci, ordinance number 3496.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance, amended ordinance, codified code accounting, nothing chapter 1.7, entitled personnel policies and benefits articles 1 through 10. I hope that this ordinance will be passed through the second meeting. Advertised in the Sunday, together with the ownership department by the law. And in further consideration of said ordinance, I would ask if I'd want to, because we know that in the second meeting, I'll set. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to public carryers, ordinance number 3493. Ordinance, amended ordinance, codified code, attached in county chapter 228, entitled vehicles and traffic. Two, they are for seven, especially homes in every section. 49A, entitled anything have parking to Google location seven, where they're in. Have a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Does anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3493? Motion to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. I want you to move the ordinance.
Aye.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Ordinance number 3494, ordinance, amended ordinance, found hard to code, attached in chapter 228, entitled vehicles and traffic, particularly work two apartments in the streets, section two, section eleven, entitled apartment on the. Have a motion to open the hearing.
Aye.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Does anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3494? Your notice.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Move on to resolutions. Commissioner Evans, we agree with Commissioner Travis, resolution.
Whereas President Tom Toronto is the Cyrus company, two emissions. Our screen class. Two days. See this ready, one term share.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci. Here resolved by the official staff from Longmont County, Mississippi, New Jersey. Treasury of B. Here by authorized to payment for our nation. Notice. Notice to you again.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas the ordinance received moving services and purchase on May 25, 2022, attached to Longmont. Whereas here, we're moving inside one point five times the level of New Jersey, which is a little bitter. Service for already seven miles, 6 cents. Local service charge, 100% price, the material, contract, regular contract, see eight thousand bottles. Of the real. Seven. Now, 2000, 2500, 2000, 2000, 2000, 2000, 2000, 2000. Certain type of chief financial officer, set certification, taking actions, presence. I look at the results on my board, this is attached to the state. I try to move him service first.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas the fourth called property council, he has a need to maintain east street, private, attached park. We're referred out with experience, I'll see people, most to New Jersey. It's a specialized service that will be effective, provide service. The amount of 519 dollars will be provided to make the contract. This is half. Which is below the statute threshold of the state mandate to pay the play threshold. Whereas referred out with experience has completed submitted business entity disclosure certification. Certifies they have not been reported or disqualified. Usually to a litigable committee, attached with the previous year. While they may say, I think, 2003, they pay 2005. The township will be paid the plain board to introduce a maximum disclosure required. The contract requirement for current experience, making any report of contributions to the contract. Responses are available from California, 2504, 2505, which have been certified by chief financial officers, subject to the option. Question, certification being access, we should not be told. It's all the commissioners, town, the local. I want to see. Most to 23. Jersey's 788. Here. It's not subject to the option.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Going out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas on December 15, 2020, township, not the entered authorized resolution. 322-20, entered to a contract with PMR text located 7777, street 607, that's the fast disclosure. With the investigation of the government plan of the area. Whereas change order number one is authorized with a contractual contract of $1,000. Whereas funds are built and accounted for 201, 226, 205. And been certified by the chief by the insurance, set certification, attached to resolution. And therefore, resolved by the official township, Longmont County, Mississippi, New Jersey. The change order number one is attached to the change contract previously made by township, 1, the PMR text located 7777, 7777, street 607. For the investigation of the government plan of the area.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas the department charged with division taxation, part attached to certificates. And set licenses of all license. Where the whole time established by any ASAC, pre-conditions, front loop, the other. As well as permanent, the work is consistent with the table. Title of the pre-reach established, this is the most meaningful period where it was established, expected, or the hotel, fire, park, or those department. That place park, township, they have been satisfied with condition. And therefore, resolved by the official township, the county, Mississippi, New Jersey. The new rule of primary retail, construction license and grant. The public licensees effective July 3, 2022, June 4, 30, or 2023, resolved by the. For being a same way of residence, signed and issued safe license, typically to the license period of July 1, 2022, June 30, 2023. License number 071631611212. I'll see, sure you guys feel 522. 546, right, every primary retail, such license. 07163301807, steakhouse. 24 of those 16, Washington, every primary retail, such license, 7%.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. Whereas rather than cases, but the secret behind marketing. Same areas where we got the church, license number 3682, our harvest. And license number 3722, our harvest, first round, the yellow, right. October 21, 2022. And when we're asking, license number 3822, our harvest, cash route, the yellow, Saturday, October 1, 2022. Whereas the application is viewed, approved by the department, this department, they have the top. Jersey and the aforementioned licenses approved and the newest priority for the rest of the issues, so license 7%.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye. That can include the business portion of our week. And part.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community. Sorry, your folks, like, provide a payment after the record. Further time is granted by the Board. Each person should limit their address to five minutes. Overruns to the Board if individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may notify citizens to come to the appropriate members.
We wish to trust the word of the Christians.
The ancient rose here, the war. Reason why I'm here today is concerning climate, schools, nothing to pay. Um, next, absolutely, that was here next October. At the time, Commissioner Tucci, the mayor told us that he is seeing G to be getting all the streets throughout the world, none. I thought to find out that the township of Nuthley actually told me, so you have to create my street. Whereas another was told to me, I can create my street because all of us supposedly going to build on the street. I found out that it was not actually going to build on the street. The deal actually fell through with the cell, which I confirmed with the cell. And now we are trying to figure out why our streets have to be. I spoke to town engineers, I spoke to people that have public works. Both agencies have not been able to issue each other, so that's not there. They don't know what they're dressing. Uh, I talked about works, concerned with damage onto my street. Um, a police application that I told that they had to call supervisor. I don't know the supervisor's hard public works, but still, I received that answers. Uh, it's not really a point about having a special street, a split street. It's actually a safety issue at this point. The damage has been done to the asphalt over the last 20 years. Uh, since that street is actually been improved, many of the situation for. Uh, danger asphalt is actually not so great at water actually pools in holes from the asphalt. So the water is no longer draining into the park. Not just that, overall, it's not watching the attendance. And out of attendance, we actually have enough children that we don't have that. Um, one of the safety concerns about our children. I mean, it's a matter of just more information of like, why should our children not have a nice big street like everybody else has?
So I can just, of course, the street will be paid, it's not going to be paid, it's not. Uh, one was the construction of the house, it was setting along, we don't want to build the street and have to dig up the till. Two, health service home is responsible for paying the part that they have done. So that's all gap street. Well, that's a cement street, so maybe gap street really doesn't work that. In addition, possibly cement to. The Aprils are trying to set at a certain level, everybody has to fall on top of that, we're going to create some other issues. So street, these don't need to be paid, it's just not going to be right this time.
Uh, well, three quarters of the street is concrete, one quarter is asphalt. And where it's significant damages, that's the asphalt portion, which is the back gap of the street, which is nowhere near. I'm also, but I can at least back that.
We'll take a look at this.
Okay, my final question is, it's not going to be paid at this moment. Do you have a timeline for it?
I will leave the floor to the president.
Well, gentlemen, please, around to example. Another question is, why do you take important back? If there's no construction.
Well, same thing, right? It's a cement street, so so many other issues that that are often there as far as the. People are upset, it's a big job, all the services.
So we have to make.
We have to.
I'm not a house for 20 years, trying to go to the town.
So the majority of the roads are cement. To fix what's there. Cement itself.
Seven hundred percent.
It was just.
Another question is, uh, back October, I stated that my house was not clean to plug in. So who do I submit my bill to for my services that I had to take to my places to reorder from the market?
I think this is what a claim will charge.
Would you probably file a period? That's what I'm here, I'm asking. I'm not like saying, it's like it's paid if you're tired.
Who do I submit, who submit, bill and claim to be offended?
Mayor, that's right.
And we're.
That's why I come to me to argue whether we can take that.
Reason.
It's reasonable to you and not reasonable to me.
No, no, it's not saying that. They're, they're pretty good. So what you submit, the patient, take it, take it.
That's how I presented, said, that was spring hot summer.
Yes.
That's I guarantee it's a second.
That's for one more. One more, one other, if they add in. Next one. It worked, like you said. You're ready for working. That's not the last. It's been nine, I wrote to the office to ask for. October 21, 2025. It also. Also ordinance, so Mayor, we stepped back, so I stepped back when it was voted on to be tabled. And for tonight, so I missed that one. Yeah, so Mr. Moore, we tabled the ordinance that we introduced last meeting. And we pulled from the agenda the ordinance number
My question is, I believe we saw, we advertised today that there's going to be a meeting on July 19. We're going to explain to you more. When does this report become public? Because if you better present it by 19, the public should at least have, it doesn't need
Well, we're not going to do another public, it would be later than that, because we're going to introduce it on
Okay, then those two, that's your point, I want to find, you're going to introduce, when is it probably
I would say we'll probably reintroduce any ordinance on the 19.
Then likely the copy of DMR, when is it going to be available?
Mr. Moore, as soon as the report is finalized. Sorry, as soon as the report is finalized, it will be, it will be made available as soon as it's finalized. There were some changes, when you stepped back earlier, the ordinance introduction was payable. And pulled from tonight's agenda, the reading, the pre-reading of it. So it's, it's an important thing, it's a work in progress, and as soon as the draft is completed, you'll get a copy.
Yeah, yeah.
I imagine it'll be next week. Anybody else wants to address the board of commissioners? To be the exact index, so have a motion for that, and we'll go for the ratchet one.
Whereas section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, 1975, it states that the public meeting, certain circumstances, and where the bodies of the unit, that such circumstances exist. And whereas the board of commissioners, the township, county, that's a major, the stars, the proceed to the most executive settlement, now therefore, here, we solve the board of commissioners, the township, the public, to those executive sessions to discuss patients?
Yes.
May further resolve of time, where such discussions may be disclosed to the public. Shall we find such disclosures, may it be, that are actually affecting the township publicly? And the handle anticipated legal, personnel, contractual matters, and other matters, and given the exceptions required in the whole my section. Resolution will take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
On this night, 13.